Download the MyHingham app today and report issues and get information on town government with ease. Available on the App Store and Google Play. You can submit service requests or gain information with just a few taps on your phone. Using the MyHingham app puts immediate access to town resources in the palm of your hand, including calendars of meetings and events, agendas for upcoming meetings, building permit filing options, online bill payment options, and info about our boards, committees, departments, and services. For more information, please scan the QR code on your screen.
Good evening. It is December 10th, 2024, 6:00 PM. A call to order this meeting of the Board of Select, you know, the Select Board for the Town of Hingham. This meeting is being held in person and/or remotely as an alternate means of public access pursuant to Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023 and all other applicable laws temporarily amending certain provisions of the open meeting law. You are hereby advised that this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be recorded by the Town of Hingham in accordance with the open meeting law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify the chair at the start of the meeting in accordance with Mass. General Laws, Chapter 38, Section 20F, so that the chair may inform all other participants of said recording. Is there anyone else recording this meeting? If not, I will note for the record that participating for the board this evening are Liz Klein, Bill Ramsey, and myself, Joe Fisher. We'll begin with a pledge of allegiance. If you're willing and able, please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on our agenda this evening is to consider approval of the minutes. We have before us the minutes of September 30th and October 8th, 2024. Bill, are you prepared to proceed?
I'm prepared to proceed.
And Liz?
Yes.
And I am ready to take a motion.
I make a motion to approve the minutes dated September 30th, 2024.
Second.
Roll call vote. Liz?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I am an aye as well.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes dated October 8th, 2024.
Second.
Roll call vote. Liz?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I am an aye as well. Minutes are approved. Next item on our agenda is to proclaim December 10th, 2024, as Human Rights Day in the Town of Hingham. And we do have the proclamation. And I would ask Liz if you don't mind doing the first two, Bill do the second two, and I will conclude.
Town of Hingham, Massachusetts, Human Rights Day, whereas December 10th marks the anniversary of the adoption of the Universal Declaration of Human Rights by the United Nations General Assembly in 1948, a milestone document proclaiming the inalienable rights of every individual regardless of race, color, religion, gender, language, or other status. And whereas Human Rights Day serves as an opportunity to reflect on the principles of justice, equality, and freedom, which are essential to the well-being of our society.
And whereas, this day calls upon individuals, communities, and institutions to reaffirm their dedications to upholding human rights, promoting peace, and eradicating discrimination and inequality. And whereas, Select Board of Hingham recognizes the work of individuals, organizations, and movements within our town and beyond that champion human rights.
Now therefore, we, Joseph M. Fisher, William C. Ramsey, and Elizabeth F. Klein, Select Board of the Town of Hingham, do hereby proclaim December 10th, 2024, as Human Rights Day in the Town of Hingham in recognition of this year's theme, "Our Rights, Our Future, Right Now," and hope to encourage all residents to take part in building a fairer and more inclusive world. We will vote this 10th day of December 24, 2024, by the Select Board. And I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to proclaim December 10th, 2024, as Human Rights Day in the Town of Hingham.
Second.
A roll call vote. Liz?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I am an aye as well. The proclamation is approved unanimously. And this is a, an important moment to encourage all residents, as we said, to take part in building a fairer and more inclusive world. Next item is we will begin the fiscal year 2026 departmental budget requests. And... Bill?
Do you mind if we start with Lisa?
I was going, I mean, I was going to ask Tom. The order here, I think we want to change a little bit.
That's right.
So I would begin with Lisa Campbell for Human Resources. Now, the seat immediately next to Art is the one that's electrified. You don't want to sit in there.
Thank you. Six feet.
Exactly. Okay, so if you can just begin with a summary, and Tom, if you want to add anything after that, that'd be great.
Thank you for giving me the opportunity to present the budget request. My name's Lisa Campbell. I'm the Human Resources Director for the Town of Hingham. My department handles all of the human resources functions for the town for all full-time and part-time non-school staff. My department is made up of two people. We're small. It's myself as a full-time director, and there's a full-time benefits coordinator. This year, we're focusing on training and development, maintaining the wage and classification system, and maintaining all of our record-keeping systems that are in place. If you remember, last year, the benefits coordinator position was changed from part-time to full-time.
Right.
And we were also granted additional funding for training. The budget that I'm requesting this year is a total of $220,916, or, yeah, $916, with $9,100 of that to be allocated to expenses. And there's not much else that's changing. There's a little shifting here and there of a couple dollars, but otherwise, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Could you just briefly comment on the benchmarks and metrics?
Sure. So the benchmarks for this department are the collective bargaining agreements, or six collective bargaining agreements that we manage for the town, number of staff that we hire and we separate each year, and collecting the benchmark data from the 19 comparable communities. Other key initiatives, I mentioned the three that we're focusing on. I just kind of lumped together just the record-keeping system, but we have an I-9 record-keeping system for, you know, collection and destruction, same thing for the quarry system, and we're, you know, it's an ongoing labor of love of, you know, basically creating electronic record-keeping systems for everything.
Liz, any questions?
Thank you for being here. I know training was a focus last year. Do you have new training programs that you're looking at for next year?
Yeah, so for right now, the initial, the initial focus was for harassment. So we're going to be scheduling that, and the budget that I have right now is probably going to eat up most of that. But next year, going forward, we'll probably vary it out with some leadership training, communication, giving feedback, interviewing skills, all those types of things that help, you know, our leadership in the town be better leaders and managers.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Bill?
No specific questions. Appreciate all the great work you're doing, Lisa.
Thank you.
Tom, is there anything you wanted to add?
I just, it's a small department. I work with Lisa on a daily basis. We have a lot of hires, like she says, a lot of separations come across her desk. She keeps this place moving. Nothing happens without the personnel that we do have in town, and she manages all of that very well. So, great job, Lisa.
How is managing the quarry process? Is that...
So there's a beginning, middle, end, and then there's the maintenance of the records. Do you want to...
No, I don't need the detail.
Have you had your stuff?
Are you nervous?
I'm a little concerned. I just want to, you know, I mean, that is an important aspect of this department that really keeps the town and the people who work, work for and get the benefits of town secure. So, thank you for that.
Yeah, thank you.
Are there any members of the public with comments or questions on this budget item? If not, you are off the house.
I will make one last comment. I regularly hear from the advisory committee how much they'd like when the town, the municipal side, and the school side were closely together. Lisa personifies that. Her department works very closely with their HR and their benefits team. There's a lot of collaboration and support of one another. So, again, just want to let everyone know.
Great. And Art or Michelle, if someone could monitor online just to make sure that there are no other comments, but I didn't say anything there. Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Lisa?
We will move on to the town clerk, Carol Falvey. And I'll just briefly thank you for having handled the last election. It was flawless, and the town has a lot of faith in how you managed it.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. I'm Carol Falvey. I'm the town clerk. The budget, we'll start with the town clerk budget first. This is a very quiet year for us, which I appreciate, and all of us are recovering, for sure. We have a budget before you, it's a total of $260,356. Mainly, the increase from last year is just attributed to salaries that have, thankfully, I have a staff that's been in place for a few years, or at least one of them, so. In terms of what we do in the town clerk's office, Joe, as you mentioned, and thank you for those kind words, we do administer elections, and we, all we did in 2024 was live with four different elections. But in addition to that, we maintain the public meeting schedule. We've scheduled over 1,200 or post-meetings in a year. We keep vital records, birth, death, marriage certificates. We serve as the record keeper for the town. I participate in town meetings. We have our annual street listing census, which you'll all be getting the form to fill out in January. I encourage everybody to completely fill that up. That keeps you as an active voter. We had hundreds of people during the election come up as inactive voter, and they had to fill in paperwork, which they were frustrated with, and it was extra work for us. But just fill out those forms and get it back to us, and that will keep you in good standing as a voter. We are the Public Records Access Officer. As of today, I have 195 public record requests that have come through my office. We issue dog licenses, business certificates. We are hosting tomorrow an author to do some historical research in our office, and we also manage violations for parking in town. So we're very busy. We do many different things. And when we don't have an election or four elections to run, it gives us much more time to spend with the constituents and to update our records and keep things... So that's, so this year, in terms of what we'll be doing, we have, as I mentioned, the census coming out. We'll be doing a confirmation notice, sort of partly town clerk, partly election, to keep our voter rolls up to date. And we'll be involved, obviously, with the 2025 town election, which is just around the corner. And always working to expand our communication skills and channels. So that's our town clerk budget. And shall I jump into elections, or you want to ask questions?
No, it's all, it's all combined.
It's all... somewhat related. So for elections, you'll see that we are asking for less money this year because we have fewer elections, so keep that in mind next year when I ask for more money for, and then three years from now when we have a presidential again. So we have, you have the budget before you. It's $36,580,000. And in terms of our voting statistics, I updated the benchmarks and metrics. We had 79% of registered voters in Hingham vote in the past presidential election. We've now surpassed 20,000 for registered voters in town, which is the first time that we've done that. We had a state primary in September, which we, we didn't have fabulous turnout. I don't think people were that excited about it, and our town election was very quiet. We actually had more people vote by mail for the town election than showed up to vote in person. Remember that statistic when I come before you in a few weeks with a different proposal. So that is pretty much what I have for that. I don't know if you have any questions?
I know in the budget, last year, we added in, what was the additional...
Poll pads.
Poll pads.
Poll pads. And so that was helpful, I assume?
It was. I mean, thanks to capital outlay. I think I texted Michelle on Election Day. Thank you for that, because we had people, we had hundreds of people waiting to get in at 7:00 in the morning, and having the two poll pads to check people in kept things moving along nicely. So it was very much appreciated.
Liz, any questions?
Thank you, Carol. Again, congratulations and thank you for all the work on the election. So just to clarify, for the, for the town clerk budget, with the, the increase in the clerical services full-time, that's just reflective of like a step?
Yes, those are step increases.
And then the elected officials' salaries? Did we add people?
Did we, for this year?
I didn't get a raise.
No. Didn't we, what?
Or that, why, what is that, what does that reflect, that increase?
The, I'm looking at, it's actually went down from, you're looking at the clerical services part-time?
She's looking at Personnel Services.
The first line. Oh, they elected, that's the election officials?
Yes.
Okay.
Those are all the election officials.
Okay.
And that, that line went down from 2025. If I'm, I'm not sure which, which line you're referring to. Elections?
I think, Carol, it's, I think it's the department head's salary. I think it's her salary.
Oh, that's a town, that's a town clerk salary. I'm sorry.
Okay, sorry.
That is on the town clerk's side.
Okay. Okay, excellent.
Liz was hoping...
Yeah, you never know. You got to ask, right?
No, no, no.
And then obviously, do you have a capital outlay request for this year?
We do not.
No, okay. Okay, great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Bill?
The 195 on the record request, is that just for this calendar year?
Yes, it is.
Wow, almost 200. Is that up or down, or is that...
It's, it's about on par for what we have. And, you know, some, I am the Record Access Officer. Everything's supposed to come through me, but sometimes the school department will get their own, and the police department sometimes will get their own. Most of the time, they come through me, and then I direct it to the appropriate department. But it's a lot, because you, you know, I, I log it, I track it, I send it out to the department heads or whoever is responsible for responding, and then I remind them, like four days before it's due, don't forget, this is coming up. So it's definitely a lot of work.
It's a response to do with 10 calendar, 10 business days?
Business days.
10 business days, right.
A lot of people think it's 10 calendar days.
10 business days, right.
10 business days. And that excludes if you have a holiday, then you get an extra day.
Yeah. And just generally, could you, what is the cost of running elections, so people watching, you know?
Well, the cost of running an election, so you'll see from this past year, our budgeted amount for 2025 was close to $79,000, and that, that budgeted amount excludes reimbursements that I receive from the state. You're probably talking about $100,000 for, in a year that had four elections. So you're probably talking about 20 to 25 per election. You know, it's hard when you have a local election where, where turnout doesn't come. You still have to have all those people there, and you still have, you know, we're still open for 12 hours, so you're paying police and custodians and the election workers and all of that. So it's definitely, it's, you know, it's expensive.
Yeah. Well, I would echo what Joe said about the great job you're doing, and you have a great office. Appreciate all your work you do for our community.
Thank you.
So your budget for elections is being cut by more than half?
Yes.
So that's an indication of how...
Well, because we have fewer, yeah.
Right, exactly. And getting back to the public records that Bill was referencing, do we collect any revenue associated with that?
No, not really. I mean, most of, we, we as a community over a certain population, we have to provide two hours of free research.
Right.
We collect after that, but it's very infrequent. A lot of times when we tell people, we will estimate, when we have received some significant requests that would involve a lot of time, we say, hey, this is going to take over 100 hours of our time, so you'll need to come up with a check. And we can only charge $25 an hour after the first two hours. So you can't even charge somebody's rate, but that's all by statute.
Right.
And when we tell them what the fee will be and deliver your check, and then we will start the research, we typically do not hear back from people. I know it's surprising, but...
So in addition to the hourly rate, is there any per-page fee that's charged?
Per page?
Per page. In other words, if someone requests 10,000 pages?
We email everything. We don't, and we typically just email.
Okay.
We don't actually copy and even, don't even send it by postage.
Great. And are you the official who is served when...
I am.
Okay.
Yes, I've been served several times. On behalf of the town.
Of course. And we appreciate it. Tom, is there anything you wanted to add?
Other than Carol's amazing, no, I'm good. Thank you.
Any questions from members of the public?
Jean's one of my election workers. Full disclosure.
Unbiased, you.
Unbiased.
Okay.
Thank you, Carol.
All right, thank you.
Okay, that's it. Thank you. Now we move on to the library. Is Linda there?
Thank you for having me today. Nice to see you all again.
Thank you for being here.
Wasn't I just here? It feels like this.
You were.
It does feel like that. So thank you for seeing me today and hearing about our fiscal '26 budget requests. So as you can see behind me, we have, I'll just kind of go through the slides first, then we'll get to the budget. Mission and services, so for those of you who don't know, the Hingham Library provides all kinds of resources. We have digital materials, physical materials. We have spaces that people come use. If you need help doing research, help with technology, we're pretty much here to, to help the whole town, every resident, birth to whenever, with all the different needs that they have. We try to provide not only the resources, but the personnel to do it. So if you need help with something, there's always a friendly staff member there to help you. We try to encourage early childhood literacy. We have all kinds of programs. So if any of you have been, and I know a lot of you have, to our library programs, we offer educational lectures, we offer workshops, we offer guitar concerts, we offer storytimes. There's always something going on in the library, so if you haven't, please stop by and sit in on some of the wonderful programs we have. We do some amazing things. To the next slide. So let me tell you about how busy we've been. Oh, after you see the library organizational chart. So I will mention the library is managed by a board of trustees, and two of them are here, Tom Carey, Monica Melendez. Thank you for showing up. And I don't think I see anybody else right now. Wonderful board, very, very supportive of the library. Joe, oh, I'm sorry, and Joe. Ex officio. And we have wonderful staff. We have professionals at all levels with all kinds of skills. And for those of you who do come to the library, you know, the library is wonderful because of the people in it. I just can't state that enough. The library is about the people, the building, the books, that's all the extra. It's the people that really drive it. So I can't say enough good things about the staff that work there, top-notch, across the board. Next slide, benchmarks and metrics. This is always fun to tell you how busy we are, because sometimes people who haven't been to the library say, really? Like, what do you do all day? Do you sit and read books? I just laugh. No, we don't sit and read books. We do a lot of other things. To give you an idea of how busy we are, throughout the year, last fiscal year, patrons borrowed a total of 369,061 items, and that includes 216,000 books, over 7,000 magazines, over 45,000 movies, music, and audiobooks, 53,000 eBooks, 33,000 e-audiobooks. Those are all downloadable, so you can do that from home in the middle of the night when you run out of something to read. Over 11,000 miscellaneous items, so we loan puzzles, we loan games, artwork, all kinds of technology. So if you want to learn a new tech device, come on in, and Robbie St. John can help you get started on that. All kinds of household gadgets and electronic devices. Next slide. For our programming piece, we have two meeting rooms and a small activity room. They are constantly in use. We have all kinds of programs going on in the library. Last year alone, the library hosted 513 programs. Over 10,000 people attended all of our programs, and this is one of those things I'll mention. The board of trustees fully funds 100% the budget for programming every year. It is just, the more programs we put on, the more people come. It is amazing. Our library databases, so when you need to research pretty much anything, there's a database for that with vetted good material. Google can get you answers. Databases can get you vetted-out correct answers. Last year, over 74,000 times they were used for research. That is just impressive. It's not only the kids doing school projects, it's, it's everybody, if you want to look anything up. So if you need any help, have a question, come into the library, and our reference librarians can help you with that. And we had over 999,936 registered borrowers. These are people who have actively used the town, used the town, used the library card in town in the last three years. If they haven't used your library card in three years, it's kind of deleted from the database, so you can get a real sense of who is using the library. And when you think, Hingham has a resident of, what, just over 24,000, I think, Tom, Michelle? Around 24?
Yeah.
So almost 10,000 of those people are actively using the library, which is amazing.
Do you need to be a Hingham resident to get a card?
You don't. Actually, you can use your card from any OCLN library. So let's say you had a Weymouth library card, you could use it here. You can actually be outside of the network and also get a library card here. We do keep statistics for any kind of non-resident users, things like that. So basically, libraries, as you know, are open and free for all, so, you know, pretty much you can register at any library and use all the libraries. Good question, though. Patrons use the wireless internet, so when we put in Wi-Fi in the library, we realized how important it was over 130,000 times last year, and the physical computers were used almost 6,000 times. We found post-COVID, a lot of people are working from home now, and that means when the dog is barking, the kids come home from school, you know, people come into the library to work, and they're bringing their devices and they're connecting on the Wi-Fi. So having good connections, solid connections, and good technology, top-notch technology to do that, super important. We also loaned over 40,000 books and other library materials, videos, things like that through our inter-library loan system, which means if you come into the library and the book you want isn't on our shelf, you can put a hold on it, and within a couple days, it's usually sent from another library. It is a fabulous service. Key initiatives. So some of our key initiatives that were identified in our last strategic plan, and we are gearing up to start more strategic planning within the next year or two. We have a five-year strategic plan on file. This one expires after fiscal '26, which means we're going to have to start doing some community surveys and community discussions and figure out what the library is to everybody and what you'd like it to be. But some of the things that had come up in the last long-range plan were the improvement of physical spaces, expansion of communication and marketing, growth as a community resource, enhancement of collections, and development of funding sources. And through the past couple years, we've always been trying to work on those, keep an eye on those initiatives as we move forward, and we'll continue to do so as we enter the next, next strategic plan in a few years. So now we get down to the budget. So the total proposed budget for this year is $2,351,205. There's a couple notes on this I want to mention. If you go to the actual breakdown, you're already there. So I want to make everyone aware that our, most of our staff are union, union staff. They are currently in negotiations. The contract is not settled. It expired last year, so they're still being paid at fiscal '24 rates. So even the fiscal '25 is still at fiscal '24 rates because that hasn't been settled. So when you see fiscal '26, it's still at the fiscal '24 rates until they settle the contract. So knowing that, you won't see total much change. There's a few step increases, you know, a few people have left, moved in, things like that. So the, the movement is pretty nominal within Personnel Services.[1771.54] Once the contract settles, we can put in the new rates and update this, but until then, it, this is, these are the numbers we have to work with.
So the new rates would be applied retroactively?
Yes, it would, yep. And that would go to this current year as well, so. The only thing that probably sticks out here is if you look at other salaries, full-time and part-time, there's about 11% plus and minus, that's, we had someone move from part-time to full-time. So we kind of moved, instead of filling to part-time, we moved one, moved it to a full-time position. So it's kind of a net loss, you know, net loss gain there. For the actual budget, so this is where, we do have pretty much fiscal '26 numbers. So aware, the library is aware, the trustees are aware, the finance committee is aware that the town is under that 3.5 cap. Because of that, you'll see a lot of zeros on here. We try to be very careful about our spending, because the town is trying to save. So we only ask for what we really need. So what you'll see is if we thought we could manage at a zero-funded level, we left it there. We figured it was good enough for this year, we'll pretty much make it for next year. There are a few things that do change. So for example, the repair and maintenance HVAC, our HVAC system is getting older. Capital Outlay has heard a request for this, because parts are breaking down, they're becoming hard to replace. So those costs are increasing. So I kind of took a three-year average on that and averaged out an increase, because I know last year we didn't have enough money, it broke down more than we had hoped it would break down. And I'm speaking specifically of the air conditioning, not the heating, heating's working great. And that was replaced a few years back. Besides that, we kept kind of level funding, we have a few minor asks for office computer supplies that just because things are costing more nowadays. Our books and periodicals number has gone up, we're asking for 150,000. And this is one of those lines I want to explain a little bit. So the trustees contribute over $215,000 every year towards this. The state has what's called a municipal expenditure requirement. And what that means is we're required to spend a certain amount of money on books, materials, ebooks, things like that every year, because that's what libraries do. If libraries didn't have funds to do these things, we wouldn't really be in business for very long. So to keep up with that, there's about a 12% increase on this number to 150,000. That means we are able to maintain state aid, which means we get money from the state every year. But more importantly, it means we're eligible to receive grants, should we apply for any state grants. It also means we're eligible for reciprocal borrowing. So when you go to the Weymouth Library, or you go, and I say that because it's close by, there's a lot of nice libraries, Norwell, go to any neighboring library, you can go in and use their, you know, register for a card or bring your card there, borrow their materials, partly because we're all part of the same network, we all agree to fund our collections. So that's one of the reasons that number is so important. Although we try to keep everything as close to zero as possible, when it comes to buying books for the library and when it comes to repairing the air conditioner, those are just things that we have to do, so those are required numbers. Then when you go a little further down, computer service and agreements, that 33% looks like a big percent, but it's really only about $1,200. And what it is, is we have a lot of different computer and technology in the library. We have the self-checkout machines, when you go on, you reserve a museum pass, that's a software. So there's a lot of different software that goes into a lot of different things. This is actually for a new software that a lot of the libraries are using that tracks the actual usage and metrics and collections, so it can help you manage your collections. So it was a new software that was added this year, so that's the extra $1,200 on that. Besides that, the OCLN network assessment, that shows a 4%, that went up from 54,000 to 56, and that's part of us being part of the old Colony Library Network, which is a consortium of about 20, I think there's 29 libraries or so, mostly in the South Shore. And from them, we get a lot of assistance in, you know, putting the bibliographic records into the database, into managing all our telecom systems, into managing when you go up to the desk and they check things in, there's a whole system there behind the scenes that they manage. So that's part of us being part of the network and having the neighbor libraries that we share things with as well. And I think that sums it up for my requests. So do I have any questions?
Liz.
I have a question, it's probably for Michelle, actually. Are we just maintaining the utilities?
It depends on the utility, so it also depends on what the department had for a budget in the past.
Okay.
Some of them are going up, HMLP, I think, was 6%, water is projected at 3%. Sewer, I think we were being more conservative, maybe at 7 or 8, I'd have to go back and check. And then there were still, we were just getting some information on natural gas and other things. So sometimes that department is looking at, like, the actuals, like Linda was talking about, taking three years of averages. But sometimes you won't see a change in the budget if the averages, like, hadn't quite reached there yet, you know what I mean?
Okay.
Yeah, and I did, and to add to that, so I did have a note that water was estimated at 3% increase, electric at 6%, gas still to be determined, I think, so that number I just kept level until I hear otherwise. But even giving those increases, I didn't put the 3 and 6% on these, because I don't think we need it. I looked at the usage, you know, and again, sometimes you never know, is it going to be cold or is it? But that's really more the gas number, but the water and the electric, I feel pretty good, even with those increases, we can sustain it. So rather than trying to artificially increase the budget and have that level cushion, I'd rather keep it what we really might need to spend.
Sure.
So I didn't put those increases on.
Okay.
And I'm comfortable doing it still at zero, I think we can sustain that.
Okay, great, well, thank you.
Sure.
Great, just a couple of questions, thank you, Linda. The 215, is that, does that include state aid or grant money, or is that above that?
I'm sorry, which line are you?
It was the 215, you said that expended by the trustees every year?
Oh, the 215, that, does it include state aid?
Yeah, you said you get reimbursed a state percentage.
Yeah, so the state aid does go into buying more books, so that money goes into that book buying.
Okay. Also, on your overtime costs, since you have fixed hours, I'm assuming that your overtime costs are driven by employees calling in sick and other employees calling for that?
Unlike other departments, our overtime means Sunday hours.
So, oh, got it, okay.
It's contractual that Sunday.
That's in the CBA?
Part of the work week, exactly. So in the CBA, it's time and a half for employees who volunteer to work on Sundays, so we call that overtime, but that's our Sunday budget.
Okay.
Nobody, I can, I actually can't think of, maybe one or two times for one or two hours. We don't really pay overtime for shifts, if somebody can't work it and they've already had their work week, we just ask someone else to come in, or we just make do.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I went through a home renovation project last year, so I spent a lot of time at the library and you're, it's a wonderful resource and your staff is super helpful, super friendly, so thank you for your great work.
That's awesome, thank you, Bill.
You have a, an audience of members from the Council on Active Living. Do you want to comment briefly on how the library really supports the senior community?
Oh, absolutely, we do. We have a lot of the same constituents, so a lot, I mean, you know, I go over to the senior center, I see a lot of familiar faces, and I'm sure you do when you come to the library. You know, we both offer programming, I mean, sometimes a little different audience, we offer a very general audience, where I think maybe you're a little more specific. But basically, you know, everything you guys do with the programming, supporting the, you know, seniors in the community, working on your new building for space, because we understand those space needs, and I see Tom shaking his head, those space needs are real, we all know that. So, yeah, we, anytime we can collaborate on programs, things like that, we certainly have done that. So it's just a wonderful resource for both of us.
Let me ask about the budget document we're looking at. The full budget for the library, or is this, this, the town's portion?
This is the municipal budget, yes.
So, but there is, the municipal budget is part of the broader library budget?
Right, the library contributes the money towards the books and materials, they also contribute $3,000 towards the audit. So those are the two pieces that they actually contribute to different town lines. So you'll see on this, the auditing services. It went up, and I think Michelle or Tom can speak to that, that it went up across the board for everybody, I think, in fiscal 20, this past year. So the town absorbed some of those increases, but the trustees also did. So this year, the budgeted 2,500, or, I'm sorry, in '25, the trustees are going to pay 3,000 in addition to that. So the total auditing is actually 5,500. So between that and the books, those are really the only two lines.
So, right, so, right, so for books and periodicals. So what, we see the change here in, on.
Budget is at 215,556 every year for the past, I don't know, 10 years or so. The reason is because at one point, the trustees were paying the majority, and at some point, like during, I think, '08, maybe, I'm looking at you, Tom, I don't remember when, funding kind of went away from the town a little bit, but slowly came back. Somewhere around there, I think. And what was happening is the trustees had more cost than they could get the income for, because they have to fundraise. So as a reminder to everyone here who's seen your annual fundraising drive letter in your mailbox, the trustees do a lot of work to actually have income and revenue come in. So we have the annual fundraising drive going on, we have a great development committee. For those of you who know Allison Malloy-Hassie, she's actually chairing this. We're going to have a, I don't know if I can announce it yet, a fundraiser, okay, I'll just hint, it's a library links fundraiser in the library, in the library, in the spring, to raise more money. So with all these different initiatives to raise funds, what happened, Joe, is that they didn't have enough to cover the costs. So every year, they had a deficit and they were just taking more and more money out of the endowment that was there. So at some point, about 10 years ago or so, I can't remember if it was Ted or Tom who was here, we decided, let's try to catch this up, because the trustees are paying for materials up here and the town was here. So we thought, let's let that number get a little more even. And it's still creeping up there. So right now, the town's paying about 150, trustees are paying 215, so they're still paying the proportion of it. But they do have to work hard to earn the funds, that's why we have all the book sales, that's why we have the art sales. I mean, everything they do is to earn money to go into buying books and materials for the library.
Yep. It's just, we're seeing the percentage increase on the municipal side.
Yes.
We're not seeing a percentage increase on the library side.
Yes.
And so what we, I think what I would like to see at least, is the full budget. And then we can see what the total cost is, the portion being borne by the town, the portion being borne by the library.
I have that actual number, it's 215,568.
So, but I think for, I don't know if there are other categories that this applies to?
No, just that and the auditing services, which is $3,000.
So the audit number needs to be adjusted here as well?
That's the town portion, so the town, so the town, we're asking for 2,500.
Right.
The trustees are paying 3,000, so the total auditing bill is 5,500, out of which the trustees are paying a little more than we're asking the town to pay, because it's also a town-required audit, not, you know, this is from the town, but the trustees are contributing to it. Besides the audit, it's just the books, which is that number, until there's a little, I think, more parity, and then maybe, maybe that would be the time to have that discussion.
Good, I've got no other questions. Any member of the public comments or questions? Tom, is there anything you wanted to add?
I think the library is the department that interacts with most residents, probably more than just about any other department, possibly direct department is close to that. But the library does a great job. Linda and her team over there, I have the privilege of negotiating with those union reps and they're so dedicated and just wonderful people to work with. So I think Linda does a great job in managing an important resource in town. Thank you, Linda.
Definitely. Thank you, Tom.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Jennifer Young presenting the budget for the Hingham Center for Active Living.
Would Linda leave?
I was going to make a comment about, you know, sort of how we do provide services to some of the same constituents, but we try not to replicate that and we really do rely heavily on a lot of the resources they offer, especially around technology and some of the things that we can't achieve at the center. So I was going to thank her for that, but now the community can share that information.
We will make sure she gets the message.
So, should I begin?
Please.
Okay. To echo everybody else, thank you for having me here tonight to speak to our FY '26 budget. I am Jennifer with the Center for Active Living, and we support the independence and ongoing personal development of Hingham's population 60-plus, advocate for their needs and work to enhance the quality of their lives. So we operate, there it is, up on there, a 5,000-square-foot, full-time center dedicated to older adults. We provide programs to meet the needs and interests of older residents across ability and age groups from 50 to 100-plus. We did celebrate 107th birthday last month at the center, so I'm not making these numbers up. We connect our seniors and caregivers to services and benefits to support independent living. We can go to the next slide. So our organizational chart, we report directly to town administration and work alongside the Council on Aging Advisory Board. We have four full-time and four part-time staff members, we do rely heavily on our volunteers, which I will discuss in the next slide. So our benchmarks and metrics for fiscal year '24. Last year, we served 1,161 seniors, we brought in almost 300 new members, we provided 396 round-trip medical appointment rides, we gave 128 seniors 761 round-trip rides to the center, shopping, day trips and for other essential errands. We ran 168 different programs. And that number actually does repeat, because we offer lunch several times a week, our fitness classes repeat each other, some of our classes run in series. So we actually ran 2,296 events. And again, we worked with a large number of volunteers, many of whom are in the room right now. 60 volunteers that helped us with everything from answering phones to designing digital flyers, driving the shuttle vans and so much more. Collectively, they provided 4,120 hours of service, which is equivalent to 2.26 full-time employees. As you know, at the annual volunteer luncheon, where we show all of our gratitude, we try to hold up a big check that says we saved the town $171,000, the volunteers did, so thank you so much for that. I just want to pull your attention to the actual chart that's up there. It really shows growth across all of those variables over the last couple of years, across the categories, except the individual number of programs that are offered and the number of volunteers that we have, and those are both due to space constraints. So we can't offer more programs, we have no more opportunities for our volunteers to come in. I will get to that a little bit more later with the presentation that is coming up. So if we can go on to the next slide, where we'll look at our achievements for the year. Josh, you love that picture. So we held our first annual enchanted center open house last year, and I want to mention that, because we are currently running that at the center. We partner with community organizations and businesses that support seniors. And they come in and they decorate each of the spaces, so it really does give our members, like, that enchanted village sort of feeling. So if you can, please come down, check out the center and vote for your favorite space. We did also rebrand to the Center for Active Living. We facilitated a feasibility study with the building committee, and that presentation is coming up in just a few brief minutes. We developed a brand ambassador program to help create awareness in the community about the center, what we do, the benefits to the community at large. And they've had information tables each month at the farmer's market, the annual police night out, the sunset picnics and at the arts walk in last October. We also reviewed, revised and adopted a new five-year strategic plan, with input from our members, volunteers, facilitators and staff. And this plan serves as our roadmap, identifying our initiatives, timelines and who's responsible for all related tasks. So our key initiatives that came out of that plan really are to increase the engagement between the center and the broader Hingham community, targeting the 50 to 60-plus age groups and 60-plus age groups through marketing, outreach and partnerships with other community groups and municipal departments. We want to increase the use of our transportation services, I mentioned the numbers that we are reaching. We know that there's more seniors out in the community that could benefit from our services, so we want to increase our communication around those opportunities. We want to increase the variety and capacity of our programs. Enhance our food services to encourage attendance and the time that people spend at the center. They have to leave to go home and have lunch in the middle of the day. And finally, to acquire and utilize a larger building space that will increase accessibility for our aging members, increase membership, enable increased programming to promote healthy active living for our community members. And how we do that is through our budget. So here we are, the reason we're all here tonight. My budget is extremely small following the library. Our personal services total 4,8,052 for the year, that will be. Our personal services total $408,052 for the year. That will be an increase of almost 6% just due to step increases. We support four full-time and three part-time employees. We have one part-time 28-hour position that is fully supported by the state formula grant. And our expenses for operation total $22,310. You'll see that some of the line items go up and some go down, but it's actually a 0% change. It's just more reflective of how we're actually spending those funds. And $11,525 of those dollars are specifically for transportation services. Before I move on to the last slide, any questions about the budget?
Keep going.
Well, it's still up there. Okay. So as always, I do have one additional request for a part-time nutrition coordinator at $34,902 for 20 hours per week. I did mention that one of our initiatives is to increase and enhance our food services. So this position would be responsible for the oversight of the existing food services program and the development of future food programs, such as a public cafe. So this is the third year we've asked for funding for the position, and the majority of our members eat almost every single meal alone, most of the time. The model of food services delivery at senior centers has changed over the last several years, moving away from the family-style congregant meal model, which is the set time, set date, set meal, set price. This would be more flexible and healthier food options. It lets our guests eat when their schedule will allow them to, and enjoy the company of their friends, instead of having to leave to find food elsewhere. Other communities are also offering that same model. Situate, Cohasset, Duxbury, Marshfield, Plymouth, and Hull have established those programs. And I included a picture, just giving Marshfield a little bit of props for their Seaflower Cafe, which was part of their recent remodel and renovation to a 30,000-square-foot facility. Do we have any questions?
I'm gonna turn it over to Liz and Bill, but I first want to ask you about the number, that 1,161 residents, seniors served. That's a very precise number. How did you come up with that?
So we actually have a data tracking system called My Senior Center. So when you come in and you fill out an application, we are requiring certain information. One, because we want to know who you are, and we want to know who to contact if something happens while you're there. It's about safety. But also, we have to provide information to the state for our formula grant, to, you know, and again, to advocate for need. So we pull this data. Every time you come in, there's a touchscreen where, you know, you touch the classes that you're coming in for. So we can actually pull the number of individuals that have attended, and the number of swipes or classes that they've checked off. It's a really helpful tool for us.
So just looking at this, and tell me if I got it right. So it's the current year, it's the 1161, and there's 282 new members there.
Yes.
So that means the prior, last year was 876?
With some, we also track our guests.
I'm sorry, 87, yeah, okay.
Yeah. And then sometimes our guests turn into members, so the numbers.
That's a, that's a 32% increase in one year.
Yes. We also hired a program coordinator last year, which really did help us to increase the number of programs that we offer. So we're really limited to the space that we have. So he's tried his best he can to fit in additional opportunities later in the evening. Also, the change in our operational hours has been, has impacted that as well. So we can offer more programs during the day, whereas before, you know, we were limited to the time.
And do you have an estimate of how many 60-plus residents are in Hingham?
An estimate? Well, according to the census, I do have that information. It is 7,113 residents.
So about 1 out of 7 were currently serving?
Yes. I believe we are, about 16% of our residents.
Liz?
Thank you. Impressive numbers, due to your leadership, your team, the volunteers. So thank you for all your work. It's really amazing. Question about, well, you mentioned the increase in rides, but I did not see an increase for the drivers. Do you feel like they have extra capacity?
So our drivers are, we have two paid medical drivers. So those are strictly driving our medical rides, unless we have a shortage in our volunteers, who then drive the shuttle vans. So we average around nine or 10 volunteers. We're always looking for more drivers. We're trying to expand the different types of trips that we're able to offer. And with the rise in cost of gas, especially this time of the year, some of our folks just would rather prefer somebody else take them safely from door to door. We did receive a grant and took delivery on a vehicle. The grant was for $160,000 from the state for a new 14-passenger vehicle. So we're able to include more people with each of our rides.
Great. Excellent. And I'm sure that is a critical service, so thank you for focusing on that. In terms of the nutrition, just tell us a little bit more about that. Like, what would that person do, the coordinator, within the current space? I think we can imagine how awesome it would be with the new space, but how do you envision that in the current space?
So we're pretty creative and flexible. Within our current space, I would really like to see, you know, a staff person that would be a responsible one. It's, you know, meal planning, you know, ordering the food, checking the inventory, stocking it and putting it away, being responsible for being Food Safe certified, Chokesaver allergen certified, first aid CPR certified. And it's about meal prep and serving. We, like I said, we are flexible. We do have a kitchen that could manage, you know, some, like I say, cafe-style food. Maybe it's a soup, it's a salad. In the morning, it's a smoothie, you know, really work within those potential four hours a day. I can't talk enough about how the social isolation impacts nutrition, which then turns around and impacts, you know, your emotional and social well-being as well. I do say, a lot of our members eat alone. I always get so emotional, you guys know this. I think about my own father. He's 85 years old. He lives down the street from me, but he eats 90% of the meals by himself. So he's bored and doesn't want to continue to cook the same thing. So he turned my crackpot on today. He's gonna get leftovers tomorrow. But I think about everybody that we service in terms of, like, how that would impact, you know, my family directly. And I see our folks come in, and they're taking yoga classes, and they have to leave to go somewhere else to get some nutrition after that. Chances of them coming back to where we are right now, oh, you know, want to get there, is their parking available? What is that gonna look like when I come back? We want to keep people where they are all day, in a place where they enjoy being, with their friends that they want to hang out with. So what would that look like? I can say, when we hold our large-scale events, and again, we're getting creative with that, we are spending thousands of dollars out of, you know, different accounts, donation accounts, to provide food services to our folks, offset by some registration fees. But if we're spending $3,000 or $4,000 for, you know, a Thanksgiving lunch, look at the savings to our budget by having somebody employed to do that within the center.
Okay. Thank you. That's helpful. Thank you.
My PSA.
I love it. Thank you.
As Joe noted, I was gonna point out that the 282-member increase from FY23 is significant. So that's fantastic, that new members are coming in at that high of a level, which is great. The program coordinator, that was a big advocacy point of our override two years ago, and it was great that you got someone on board last year. Can you just speak to how that position has helped operations at the center?
Absolutely. I think, you know, prior to having the full-time dedicated position, we all pitched in to try to coordinate those programs. We have somebody that's dedicated to getting out, to talking to people, figuring out, you know, what specifically is it that you want, what's working, what's not working. It's freed up time for the staff to create other initiatives. The marketing committee, I can't think enough, with our volunteer ambassadors that are getting out there, going to these community events. I mean, I would definitely attribute that 283, you know, number for new members largely in part to all the work that our volunteers are doing. So it's allowing us to, you know, expand our outreach to the community.
Great. Thank you. Echo what Liz said, you're doing a great job. Appreciate the work of you, your staff, all your volunteers.
Thank you.
So communication is an issue that this board has been addressing all year in terms of making sure that the town is aware of important issues, that we communicate, whether it's for the water company, whatever it is. And I think that you are leading us in terms of making sure that there's a good outreach program, communications. And we may have another discussion about lessons you can give us, because I think you've really done a great job in communications. I want to turn to sort of the negative, which is, what's wrong? What's deficient in where you are, and why do you need a new place? And that may lead to our next discussion.
Okay. I will stay up here for another minute. Once again, I'm Jennifer Young, the director for the Center for Active Living. So I just provided our usage data a few minutes ago with the budget presentation and the department initiatives as well. I did mention that our initiative numero uno is to increase our space with 7,113 residents, age 60 and over. That makes up 29% of the current population here in Hingham. Over the next 10 years, that number is going to increase to almost 10,000, which will be 39% of the population. And as I mentioned, we do provide services and programs for caregivers, family members, and early retirees. So if we group in the age 50-plus, that number's gonna increase to 12,617 residents, 49% of the entire population of the town of Hingham. So we currently serve almost 1,200 seniors over the course of the year. And again, we see residents from age 50 to 107. So it's a span of 57 years of an age difference. You know, what somebody in their 50s wants to come in for is not necessarily the same program that somebody in their 80s or 90s, or even early 100s can or wants to come in for. So we can't kick out the old and come in with the new. We have to find a way to continue to expand the programs that we offer. Again, diversity, the types and numbers of programs that we can offer, how often we can offer them. So we offer social media classes and digital photography, arts classes, health education, wellness clinics, social programs, special events. What we're able to do is sometimes offer those programs once a month, or once every quarter. The interest is there, but our capacity to provide those programs is not. Our attendance is, it's full. We're than that, people over the age of 60. We're still having wait lists of 20, 30, 40 people for some of our programs, which is great, because it says that what we're doing is interesting, but it feels awful to say, I'm sorry, you can't come to Thanksgiving lunch, because we don't have the capacity to serve you. So what I want to say is that the town leadership here really has recognized those deficiencies and the struggles that we have. And, you know, in 2020, created the senior center now, Center for Active Living Building Committee, to further evaluate the community's interests and assess the feasibility of expanding the centers. So as you guys all know, I could sit up here for an hour talking about, you know, how passionate I am about the work that we do, and how appreciative I am of everybody that's supported through this process. But I don't want to take away from the presentation that's gonna follow, but I will be happy to answer any more questions.
I mean, I think this board recognizes the importance of having adequate building. I mean, right now, it's not. And we are committed to making sure that there's positive steps that happen during your lifetimes, because some people think it's just taking forever. So, you know, we are committed to moving this forward. And in that regard, Town Meeting set up the committee that Tom Carey is chairing. So at this point, I think we can turn it over to Tom, and you can let us know. Give us an update on where it's going, your preliminary design presentation.
Thank you, Jennifer. Great job.
Thank you, Jennifer.
You're not off the hook yet, though. We'll have you back.
Well, thank you. Your comment about people thinking it's taking too long. I want to give you a shot. I'd like to begin with a short history of how we got to tonight's presentation. In 1993, the voters of the town of Hingham approved the notion that we should take the abandoned junior high school and convert it into a town hall civic center. In 1998, we dedicated it. 5,000 square feet was the senior center. That was an upgrade of over 10 times what they had had before, which consisted of Hersey House down in the center, an old wooden colonial building, in which functionally, you had the living room. And if you wanted your taxes done, you went up a narrow wooden staircase to the room above to get some help. We had people coming from all over the South Shore, saying, my God, what a wonderful senior center. So, well, that was roughly a quarter of a century ago, and
Are you saying times have changed?
Nobody is coming saying, wow, Hingham is leading the charge on senior centers. So the Board of Selectmen, a number of years ago, appointed a town hall study committee to look at the situation afresh. It became clear that the senior center didn't have enough space. It also became clear that the police station had outgrown their space. I was on that committee, and it's discouraging to look around at what was so great and realize a quarter of a century later, God, we could have used a lot more. So we had the, the Public Safety Building is in process now, which is a combination of the North Station Fire and getting the police there. In our studies on that committee, looking around at various towns, that kind of an arrangement was becoming very popular, very efficient. With the anticipation that they would be moving out, this committee was created, then the Senior Center Building Committee, which I'll probably continue to call that until I'm no longer able to speak. But it's the Council for Active Living. The, and our initial charge was to look at the potential of, well, if the 10,000 square feet of the police is gonna be vacated, and it's right next to the 5,000 square feet, you know, maybe we can expand the senior center within that space. A year or so, or maybe two, Town Meeting broadened our mandate and said, well, don't just look at this precise building. Look at other potential sites. And in the meantime, the wonderful committees that I'm working with had been diligently doing our job. We went to virtually every neighborhood senior center and visited them. We saw the operations. We pulled the floor plans on all of them. With Beth's help, we had the study upcoming for the Council on Aging of Senior Need. Every town that had built a new senior center, or added significantly to the one they had, as was the case in Marshfield, did so with one of those UMass reports, because it's recognized to be quality work, without any bias one way or another, and they just do the analysis. When that report came in, it simply confirmed what we all know as to the needs in the town at the present time. But it also looked ahead to 2035. After seeing how inadequate the original senior center was 25 years later, that notion that maybe we should be looking forward before we spend a lot of money on a project is something that resonates with me. In addition, with the appropriation of funds from Town Meeting, we retained, we put out for bid a request for architectural services to do a feasibility study of a a request for architectural services to do a feasibility study of a senior center in Hingham. And we hired EDM architects after interviewing several applicants. And I must say, we're quite pleased with the decision that was made because they've been phenomenal. They've held, they've kept the committee up to date. They've looked at all of the work that we had done and the program outline that we had developed. They brought their own expertise into that. And you're all going to get your own chance to see what a wonderful skill set they've brought to the process. So this is a long time coming. But at this stage, our committee is prepared, and we'll give you the recommendation after everybody sees the presentation. But we believe that what you're going to see tonight is a very complete and thorough evaluation of, A, the needs of the town of Hingham to serve its 50 and over population over the next quarter of a century, starting today and over the next quarter of a century. And it will show the programming, as well as what sort of architectural materials are going to be needed in order to accomplish that. And consistent with the charge that we had from the Selectmen and particularly from Town Meeting directly to look at both locations, we made every effort to do that. And what you will hear tonight is the outcome of that. And I hope you'll be as interested in seeing it as we were in working with them in developing it. And after they have made their presentation, I'll come back with the committee's recommendation and also to respond to any further questions you might have.
So who would you like to introduce so that we can...
Chris, Doug. These are the architects from EDM. Chris Wanty, Doug, and Brian.
Should we all squeeze in up here?
You can pull over other chairs, too, if you need.
There's, yeah, there's multiple chairs.
You want to come over here, Doug? Thanks for the intro, Tom.
Just introduce yourselves.
So I'm Chris Wanty. I'm with EDM Studio. I'm the project architect and project lead for the feasibility study. To my right here is Doug Gallo. He is a senior center design specialist and an architect also. And to my left here is Brian Kay with SLR. He's a landscape architect and helped us with the site planning process. So thanks for giving us the opportunity tonight to meet with you all. We have a short three-hour presentation, so hopefully that's adequate. No, we have a lot. We have a lot here.
We have the popcorn. We're just...
We have, as Tom said, we've spent the last seven months, you know, investigating the both sites that we've been given. And there's a lot that we could talk about. We're going to try to condense it as quickly as we can, you know, leaving opportunity for questions at the end here. So if you want to maybe flip to the agenda slide. So basically, what we're going to talk about today is a summary of our process, really quickly go through all the steps that we went through to get to today. We're going to talk about the design concepts that we looked at in a lot of detail for Town Hall, talk about the design concepts that we looked at for the Bear Cove site, and then give you guys a quick comparison of the two sites. And then at the very end, I think Tom is going to give a small presentation on some other components of the investigation. So if you want to flip to the public engagement section. So we started this whole process really trying to understand from the community what it is that they want. So we met numerous times, I think about 10 times with the building committee, all of them public meetings that were recorded. We had two different, three different sessions with the public and senior members. One was an event where we asked the public to come to the senior center to talk to us, just to learn more about them. We had more focus groups that we met with, you know, a group of 10 people to talk more in detail about some of the things that we heard in those events. We had surveys. So we've spent ample time talking to the community as that was one of our main focuses in this whole process, was to really hear from everybody what it is that they're looking forward to. So if you want to just kind of zip through the next few slides, this is just some examples of some of the questions that we asked. The next slide is some photos of the actual events that we held here at the senior center, sorry, across the way. And then the next slide is just some photos of the focus groups that we held, again, at the center. And in the end, the summary, if you want to flip to the next slide, was we heard a lot of the same things in all the different groups. You know, we want ample safe parking. We want more space to provide more programs at the same time. We want opportunity for outdoor spaces. So a lot of the, like I said, a lot of the, a lot of similar topics came up at all these different events. So the architectural program was the next step, was defining, all right, what is the actual, what is in this building? What's the size of this building? How is this building going to function? I'm going to let Doug talk a little bit about that process and the steps that we took there.
So I think what we, how we approached the project in developing, taking that information that we got from the general public and coming up with ultimately, "How big is this building?" is really to define the question and then define the answer. And in doing such, what we looked at is not asking what rooms and spaces you want or need. That's something that collectively as a team, we did. But what we looked at is what are the activities? What are the programs? What are the services? What are those that are being offered now? What are those that can't be offered now? As Jen talked about, the issues of not having enough space, not having enough appropriate room space and activity space. And what are the services that are being offered to the general public? And especially to those 50 and older in the community. And so as we looked at that, we spent two days with Jen, talking about a whole lot of things. We had sent her a questionnaire beforehand to have questions answered. And then we really got into the weeds on it and talked about all of those issues. And with that, we looked at dedicated spaces. Go on to the next slide. We looked at dedicated use spaces, and we looked at flexible use spaces. And a lot of that also has to do, talking about what the generations are expecting. We're talking about four generations of older adults here and different needs that the generations are expecting and those that are expecting a more professional experience. If you look at the GI generation, which there are very few left from that generation, and look at even the silent generation, their expectations of going to a senior center and what services are being offered are very, very different than the baby boomers, the Gen Xers. And trying to bring all of that together is very important. We also looked at staffing needs. And we think that we really need to understand how a building operates and how Jen wants the facility to operate from a staffing use standpoint, also being a good environment for employees, making sure that there's retainage, keeping people working. You know, when you find a good person, you want to keep them. And so those are important. And then looking at the building systems and making sure that we're creating an aging-friendly facility. And what does that mean? Looking at, discussing from a costing standpoint, lighting levels, how the HVAC system is working, making sure we don't have a lot of background noise, thinking about the older ear and those issues. So really taking all of those types of things into account. And looking at furniture layouts. Different types of furniture layouts are different types of activities and how they might fit in certain rooms and the equipment that's needed in those spaces as well. And ultimately, what we came up with was a number of 28,000 square feet. We approached this with no expectation of what that number was. We know that there had been some early discussions, as Tom talked about, that, you know, what would happen if we had 15,000 square feet? Would that do it? But as we really looked at all of the factors involved and talked to Jen about developing the programs and how many participants, and the fact that she talked about there were waiting lists and so on, and wanting to be able to have activities happening at the same time, where now there's only two spaces where things can happen, so you can't have a whole lot of people doing that, plus the parking issues and parking needs. We looked at there are assembly rooms and dining facilities, exercise and fitness spaces, art-focused activities, and looking at also the idea of flexible use and thinking about the future and what happens if other services are being offered in the future. So that 28,000 square feet was the number where we came up with. How we ended up developing that, and if you can move on, and I'm certainly not going to go through this, but these are all the spaces that we developed. And we talked about spaces, not only in square footage, because that square footage was determined on how many people do you want to be in an art classroom? How many people do you want to be in an exercise room? You don't want 50 people in an exercise room with one instructor. It's not safe. You know, we want to make sure everybody's getting a quality experience out of that. But we also looked at the proportionality of those spaces. Because it's an extreme way to put it, but a room that's one foot wide by 100 feet long is 100 square feet of room, but it's not usable. So we wanted the proportionality of the space to also be evaluated, which is why we've actually looked at those sizes. And we came up with a gross square footage of 28,000 square feet. And in doing such, we didn't back into that number. We created that number by doing that. The other thing that that does, though, and it's something that we see is so often overlooked, is what does that mean then about parking? 28,000 square feet, how many parking spaces do you need? And we don't look to see what zoning has to say because we know that zoning is going to be a required minimum. It's not meeting those needs. And what we have found over decades of working on senior centers is you need seven parking spaces per thousand square feet of building. And just time and time and time again, those are the numbers that actually work out. And so by doing that, it's a little over 200 parking spaces. Now, how do we back that up? We also looked at all of the rooms and spaces in the building and looked at those occupancies of how many people we want in each one of those activities. And if you do that and do 100%, which we don't expect 100% occupancy all the time, but that's 397 people in the building at one time. That's not an unreasonable event to happen in this building. If you do 75%, you're looking at 298 people. If you do 50%, you're looking at 198 people. So to say we have 200 parking spaces isn't unreasonable. Because we know, even though there is some transportation offered, the vast majority of people going to a senior center, it's one car, one person. Maybe it's one car, two people. People aren't carpooling. You don't have five people coming in a minivan because you went around your neighborhood and picked up all your friends. So there's a real need to make sure we meet that parking need. And then we also looked at what other outdoor amenities we may want to have. Outdoor patio space, possibly gardening space, some yard game space as well. And so looking at what site development needs to take place in that as well. And that's where architectural program was developed. And then Chris is going to move on, and Brian's going to move on to talk about what we looked at with regard to each one of the sites and how we developed those issues as well.
Thanks. Doug? So when we talk about the two sites, we're going to be talking about Town Hall right here, and we're going to be talking about Bear Cove, just highlighting those on the map there. And as these guys have mentioned, once we kind of have the program, we can now size those different elements. So on the forthcoming slides, you're going to see these types of diagrams. You're going to see a 20,000, 28,000 square foot building. You know, in some cases where it's multiple stories, you might see that shrink or not. But then you're also going to see these blue bubbles that are going to designate parking. Do we have enough room? And at this stage of the game, that's what we want to see when we're evaluating these sites. Is there enough room to meet this program that kind of everybody is, you know, going towards? There's also quite a bit of evaluation criteria that we are factoring in on top of everything fitting. But at this stage, like, we just highlight number one there. We want to have the right building size. We want to have the right parking. That's always a high-scoring attribute of these senior centers. And then we also just want to highlight other, you know, factors that could, like, put a hold on a certain site. So we have just highlighted the environmental impact, knowing the Bear Cove history. We wanted to make sure that wasn't a deal breaker. So when it comes to Town Hall, you could actually have an aerial here on the screen showing Town Hall, showing Cronin Field, showing Haley Field down at the bottom. And if you flip to the next slide, just kind of calling out those square footages and kind of the acreage that we are working within. If you want to go to the next slide. We went through numerous iterations of those boxes, kind of fitting around the site. We've looked at renovating existing. We've looked at adding on the back. We've looked at, you know, on the right-hand image, Haley Field, putting a senior center there, putting parking down there. You know, the white envelope circle that shows up on a lot of these diagrams is proximity to the front door for people parking at senior centers. We want as much parking as possible to be close to that front door. I'm not going to get into the details of these, but I just want to show you some of the sites that we were studying, some of the thoughts that came out of building committee meetings. And if you go to the next slide. You know, we studied what parking would look like out front here in the circle, kind of making the most efficient use of that space. Later concepts, you know, want to keep that sacred, keep parking in different areas. If you go to the next slide, we also have explored the Cronin Field option. Originally, we had a, the main access coming out on Borough Road. We heard that wasn't a very viable option, road size, other issues. So then you can kind of see later concepts, having roads coming around the Town Hall, going through the senior center, through the Town Hall site. So just, again, just kind of fitting the pieces on these different sites and seeing what rose to the top. Go to the next slide. So in the end, we just kind of listed, wanted to list quickly advantages and challenges of these various sites. So I think one of the obvious advantages to staying here was just people knowing the current location, you know, potential reuse of some of these amenity, of these amenity spaces, and, you know, utilities obviously being in the area. Some of the challenges here are obviously parking. The parking is tough. And the diagram that's on the screen, you could see we are already having a remote kind of site down there where we're parking people. They'd walk along the existing sidewalk, come to the senior center. But again, this is us trying to fit the program, which I think we all agree is the goal here. Next slide, please. And then didn't want to rule out the option here. So Cronin Field, showing a two-story building on this site, showing a parking quantity of 170 spaces. So again, under the 200 that we're targeting. There's circulation challenges to this site. There are the complexities of working next to Town Hall just during construction, those kind of complexities. And I think, you know, the coveted Cronin Field itself, I think, is a topic of discussion. So there's that factor there, too. So again, when it came to Bear Cove, we wanted to take the same approach. We wanted to look at all the sites that presented themselves in this area. So the next slide kind of shows four areas that we looked at. You know, we looked at the Tracers Building. We looked at Site Number Two, which we're calling, is the site behind the Fire Museum. We're going behind the Model Train Building. And then also Site Number Four is up front near the Bus Depot. So again, these kind of concepts, quickly, you could see where things didn't fit. The Tracers site, you were looking, you were going to end up at a two-story building. The parking was way undersized. You were okay to go to the next one, yeah? The parking was undersized. You had a split facility. Site Number Two, you can kind of see everything fits. The building is close to the parking. That's, that site worked well. Going to the next slide. Again, that, Site Number Three, the Fire Museum. The building orientation to the parking was a good relationship. It was a little closer to the community down there on the bottom. So, you know, in our scoring metrics, that weighed differently. And then when it came to the Bus Depot, that site, again, when we talk about the full program build-out, it was just too small to fit the kind of goals that we're striving towards. And the next slide shows the preferred site at the Bear Cove option. The advantages here seemed pretty apparent. You know, we can get a single-story building. You can accommodate the 200 parking spaces. I think the connection to the park itself could provide a quite nice amenity to seniors walking in and out with the trail access right down the road. You know, full ADA compliancy in a site like this. Some of the challenges that just, we just wanted to highlight here are just some of the extra coordination... are just some of the extra coordination effort that was likely with the national parks and just knowing the site. And also, we did testing out there for environmental concerns, and all that came back at an unreportable level. So good first pass, didn't raise those red flags that we wanted to confirm. So the next slide just wanted to show comparison, one site to another, other elements in town, points of interest. So not to say that one's kind of way out or not. They're kind of felt all in the realm. But I'll switch it over to Chris, I think, to take us through the further concepts.
Sophia, flip a couple of slides. We started, so those last few slides that Brian showed on both the Bear Cove and Town Hall were the sites that, with the building committee, with their help, we decided to take a little bit further in development. So what we're going to show you now is more of a developed concept design for three different options. There's a renovation and addition off the back of the current senior center location, including the police department space. We looked at the option at Cronin Field, putting a new building out there. And we looked at a building, a new building at Bear Park behind the Fire Museum. So those are the three sites that we decided to develop a little bit further and put a little bit more design effort into. So this is the site plan for the addition off of the back of the senior center. It was essentially remove the existing senior center, single-story building to fit more parking, because as we heard, parking is one of the biggest concerns to fit with this program. The only way to get the amount of parking that we would suggest is to provide a remote parking area down towards the south there on that town-owned land. So, you know, as Brian was saying, when we looked at this option, there were pros and cons to it. The cons are obviously the parking and how we would have to squeeze a larger footprint into a very complex Town Hall site, which if you go to the next slide, zooms in a little bit further onto that location. We looked at how do you fit parking? We looked at the semicircular area. It was a no-fly zone. We looked at a split-level parking garage to try to figure out parking. It just, everything got a little bit too complicated. So we just wanted to show that we studied it. Going to the next slide. We dove into what does the floor plan look like? How would a two-level senior center attached to the existing building look? I'm not going to go through the floor plan and kind of how all things come together. But the complexity here was the existing building actually has three different levels that we were working with on the first level alone. So not even including the second level. There's just a lot of level changes. So trying to coordinate that in and around all of the other existing spaces proved to be challenging. You can see it's the highlighted area that we show up on the plan is the senior center dedicated space in and around the shaded areas, which is other Town Hall shared spaces. If you go to the next plan, this is the second floor, you know, sharing the space with the Shrek, which we were told was off-limits. It would be very difficult to move them, so we'd be sharing the second floor with them. We would have to add a second elevator essentially to make this option work. And as Jennifer knows, having one elevator in a two-story building doesn't always work out well. Maintenance, if something's down, it causes circulation complexities. So this became pretty apparent right away that once we started laying things out to fit the program, it was very, very complicated and didn't necessarily create a very easy, navigable senior center or Center for Active Living. But along with that, if you go to the next slide, just the same kind of pros and cons list. Multi-level facility, major operational disruptions during construction. We didn't even really talk about that. But to, you know, displace Jennifer and her crew would take a lot of effort and a lot of expenses. Limited outdoor space for activities, limited parking. So there was just a lot of reasons to not continue further with this option, which sprung the next slide, which was what would happen if we put a new building at Cronin Field. This shows a building directly adjacent to the back of Town Hall with parking towards the east. Didn't quite meet the parking requirement here, but we were pretty close. Had to provide some access off of the main road there without messing really with anything on the Town Hall proper side. But to fit this building here and to get close to the parking count, we had to go to a two-story option. So, which again, is not preferable. But to make this site work, we explored it a little bit further. Go to the next slide. Started to look at what the floor plan would look like. Again, not going to go through it, but you can kind of see here how a two-story option would look on the interior. We basically took a second story, put it over the, most of the activity spaces, the single-story area, a lot of the larger spaces that need more height, more ceiling space. So that's kind of roughly how a floor plan could look for a two-story option if you keep going. We did some design exercises in terms of what would a building look like. And again, just to back up a little bit, the floor plans that we're looking at and the exterior that we're looking at, this is not to say this is the building design. This is just kind of a concept of the building. Ultimately, you know, things will be manipulated and look a lot different if this becomes a project. But these are just kind of concepts of what the plan and the design could look like. So these are just some local senior centers in the area that we wanted to pull some inspiration from. If you go to the next slide, just shows kind of some inspirational thoughts in terms of the massing of the building, what is two stories? What could be a green roof? What are the tall spaces in terms of multipurpose spaces and large gathering areas, want a little bit more height? Go to the next slide. We just did some renderings to see what a building could look like in this type of environment, which would really want to fit within the neighborhood. It wouldn't want to be a big municipal building. It would want to kind of respect the residential nature of the surrounding spaces. So just wanted to show a concept of what that could be off the back of the building. Go to the next slide. Again, just a list of pros and cons. With this site, we didn't quite meet the parking requirements. The two-story facility, the Cronin Field, and all the legal issues and the community issues that are part of that just didn't quite, again, meet a lot of the requirements that we were looking for. But it did meet the overall footprint of the building program. It utilized the existing Town Hall location and a lot of the synergies that we could utilize there. So, you know, a lot of the same things we've already talked about. Going to the next slide. These are costs that we looked at for Cronin Field. Now, I'll go through this quickly. Bear Cove is going to be very similar in terms of how I broke it down. But we broke it down by construction costs, which is how much putting a building that's 28,000 square foot with site costs would be. So we're looking at about $24 million for a 28,000-square-foot building with, you know, roughly 170 parking spaces. That's hard costs or construction costs. There's this thing called soft costs as well. It's contingencies, it's design fees, it's owners' project managers' fees, there's a whole bunch of other things, which I'm sure you guys know from the Public Safety Complex. So project costs all into the town, something like this would be in the $30 million range. There's escalation included in that. We are assuming construction starting in the summer of 2026, so we have an escalation of about 6% to get to that point, with some design contingency in there, about a whole bunch of unknowns. So this is, again, conceptual level, super-high level. Don't have a lot of information on the actual design, but this gives a general idea of costs. So flip to the next slide. We went through the same exact process with Bear Cove. We looked at what could the building look like? What could the parking look like? So here on the slide here, to orient yourself, there's the Fire Museum in the bottom right there. The building and the parking would be to the northwest of the site. So you can see we have plentiful parking directly in front of the building, mostly within the range of travel distance that we want. We're also making some decent improvements to the park access itself. You could see the entry road in there that we would be proposing to improve. We're proposing some additional parking areas for the Bear Cove trails itself. So there's a lot of kind of ancillary improvements that we'd be proposing to make this happen, you know, providing connection walkway from the parks themselves to, or the recreation parks to the building. So there's a lot of additional components to this that we'd be looking at outside of just the senior center building and the parking lot. Go to the next slide. Again, this is the floor plan that we came up with at the conceptual level. It's really simple to navigate. It's a single story. All the spaces are organized in a very simple, easy way to understand when you're walking through the building. We have offices looking out towards the parking lot. All the green, not the green spaces, the teal, bluish spaces are a lot of the activity spaces. Exercise spaces are in the orange. So we've grouped these things kind of, you know, in terms of how they function and what other spaces they want to be connected to. Go to the next slide. The design of the building, you know, we really be pulling from the history of the site. Ultimately, if a building is put here, we'd want the history of the site to reflect in whatever the building architecture and the building design is. So these are just some fun conceptual and historical images that we found that we wanted to kind of show was our inspiration. If you go to the next slide, this is just kind of a massing study in terms of, you know, where are those components that we're pulling from on the history of the site? And how might that inform the shape and the size of the building? And then going to the next site, you know, really trying to reflect a historical facility that has similar massing to what the old military buildings that were on-site, you know, reflect the shoreline community and the coastal architecture of the area and really reflect what that history of the site is in the building itself. You know, building with a lot of daylight, a lot of views to the nature and a lot of connection to the exterior would be really important for a building like this. So we were trying to reflect that in the design. Go to the next slide. Costs, very similar breakdown. The one difference here that we wanted to break out was the non-center-related site work. So we have about $2 million in proposed non-senior center property upgrades. So like the trail that I was talking about from the ball fields, the formalized parking area, the entry drive, it's all stuff that we'd be proposing that wouldn't necessarily have to be done, but we think would be really important to make this project work. So this project would be a little bit more than Cronin Field option. The reason for that mainly is the site clearing is there's just more site work to do there with the ancillary park-related upgrades. So it's a tick above what the other budget that we showed was, but we're looking at the $34 million range with the same escalation, same contingencies and whatnot. So going to the next slide. These are all the key factors that we identified. So a lot of things, you know, were in the positive, the building footprint fit, the parking fit, connection to the nature, the connection to the park itself, the opportunities for all the community synergies, you know, the walking trails, the ball fields, the new pickleball courts that are proposed at the Tracers site. There's a lot of possibilities that we feel like this building could add to that property. The few downsides, like Brian mentioned, the environmental cleanup, there's a little bit of additional cost there, but nothing that raised big red flags and the regulatory bodies that we're going to have to coordinate down the road. Go to the next slide. So really quick, I'll just go through the site comparisons. These are all the evaluation criteria that Brian talked about earlier. If you go to the next slide, we scored everything with the building committee and gave each site an actual number. And the next slide blows up those numbers for you, so you can actually see what you're looking at. But you could see here, the Bear Cove site scored a plus 24 on our scale. The Cronin Field option scored a plus 12. And the Town Hall expansion, which we looked at in depth, we didn't cost it out, but we scored it. It was a negative 12, which kind of bears out the reason why we didn't continue to explore that any further. And then going to the next slide, we just laid out all the key criteria that we believe the town should really pay attention to when they're making their decision. And this is just a summary of all those components. And then the next slide, same thing, just a more descriptive key criteria for each of the different components of the sites that we really think the town should focus on. And then the next slide, I'm going to pass it very quickly to Tom.
So we have John Cofflin online on Zoom that can perhaps speak to this slide.
Sure. Can you hear me, Tom?
Yep.
Yep. So working with Susan Murphy this afternoon, we just put together a couple of quick slides just to go through, kind of, to orient us to the location in Bear Cove Park that we're talking about. So just to remember, Bear Cove Park, this portion of it was acquired from the federal government back in the '70s. It was originally 460 acres. Then there was an additional seven acres added on to that. We refer to it generally as Bear Cove Park. But just to be clear, Bear Cove Park itself as a formal park, it's a smaller area. It runs between the Shelter Path off Beale Street and the gate at the end of Bear Cove Park Drive. That is officially known as Bear Cove Park. However, all of this land is under the jurisdiction of the National Park Service because it was acquired from the federal government. And so that includes this location where the Center for Active Living is proposed to be located. And the use of all of that land is subject to oversight by the National Park Service. So we have two levels of approval we would need for this site. One is a federal approval by the National Park Service, and the second is a state approval through the Article 97 procedure. So we can go to the next slide to talk about the National Park Service. So under that program, any building, any new building that's constructed would need approval from the National Park Service. So we've already reached out to the contact of the National Park Service starting last spring. We've had discussions with the National Park Service, which have been positive. I don't think, I don't expect any major hurdles or problems getting this approved by the National Park Service, but we do have to go through that procedure. That would involve a process for filing an environmental screening form. We'd have to submit conceptual plans. All of that would have to be reviewed by the National Park Service. We're in the process of putting that package together now. And we've been in contact with the local offices recently as today on some of the sites. So we'll work through that. I think we'll get through that without any major problem, but that is a step that we need to take to use this, to use this land for this purpose. And then the next slide. So assuming we get through the National Park Service, we also need approval at the state level. Under Article 97, which also has a statute that goes along with it, Chapter 3, Section 5, the Open Space Act. Article 97, as we all know, protects open space. It's a state constitutional amendment. So anytime we want to change the use of open space, in this case, you'd be constructing a building and a parking area and maybe some fields, we need to go through a procedure with the Executive Office of Environmental Affairs. We would need to come up with a strategy to get through that process, including potentially replacement land or a payment in lieu of replacement land. replacement land or a payment in lieu of replacement land. We have already started those discussions with the state. We have a meeting scheduled next week with folks from that agency. So we're going to work through these procedures and we expect that at town meeting, we'll have to take a vote to file a special act to get approval. There's also another statute, Chapter 45, Section 7, which requires legislative approval for any building over 600 square feet. We've done this before. We did that for the snack shack down at the bathing beach. So we've been through this process before. I think we would file one special act to cover it all, work with the local legislative delegation, and we would need both of those approvals, federal and state, in order to use this site.
Thank you, John. Joe, I think timing wise, if I could present my slide after Tom reports the results of their committee's assessment, that would make more sense.
Yep. Before, John, before you conclude, can you give us just a ballpark sense of timing going through the federal and state process? Is that two months, two years? I'm, I'm trying to get a ballpark sense of the timing on that.
Yeah, I think obviously we, we need a town meeting both the spring in order to file that special legislation. I think the National Park Service, I'm less worried about because we can be working on that in the meantime if this is the chosen site. If we go through a Article 97 legislation, that would be filed by the local legislative delegation after town meeting. Those can take anywhere from six to 12 months. It just depends on when they're in session. It depends on factors that are kind of beyond our control. But I, I would put somewhere between spring of, if we pass a warrant article in spring of '25, I would put spring of '26 to get that approved. But that, we'd really have to talk to Joan and Pat about how long that may take.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Ask a question about John too?
Sure.
John, I'm kind of curious about the requirement for a payment in lieu of, to be used to acquire replacement land. Either we have to pay them for the land or we have to give them land, correct?
So when you take open space like this, the theory is you're supposed to replicate it with other equivalent open space. But there's also a procedure where you can make a payment in lieu of finding alternate, alternate equivalent space. And one of those includes payment to your own community preservation fund. So we haven't met with the state. We have a meeting next week, but there's lots of options on the table that we can explore to get their support for this bill and what the town would need to do in order to kind of make up for taking this open space, you know, off the table. So it could be land, and we've talked about land at the Housing Authority, maybe dividing up. We've talked about maybe making a payment. There are lots of different options. I think after next week, we'll have a better sense of where we're going with that.
And just to follow up on that question, does the replacement land have to be adjacent to the land that's being taken?
No, it does not.
So it could be land under the care, custody control of the town elsewhere at the town?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And it could be new land that you acquire, or it could be existing land that's dedicated. There's lots of ways to go.
Okay, great. Go ahead, Tom.
Just one last thing is the legal team and I are meeting with the EOA next week, and we'll know more information from them after that meeting. Tom, do you want to report out the results of your committee?
After that presentation, I assume that this will come as no surprise. The committee unanimously voted to recommend the Bearcove Park site. I doubt that there's anyone in town who would have preferred more to have the continuation of the senior center located in conjunction with Town Hall than I. But try as we did. It's impossible to get the sort of facility the town needs and the seniors deserve in this location because of all of the constraints that, that were already gone through. The Bearcove Park site, although its location kind of at one end of town, is not as good as being in the center of town. Yet we've got seniors who, because of the inadequacy of what we currently have, are driving to Situate and Marshfield to use their senior centers. So the building that has been designed is beautiful in terms of the layout, everything that you would want. On the size, I'm struck very much by Marshfield, one of the first places I visited way back on that first committee. And a town not that much different from us, and we're growing to the point where we'll be near it. They put up a senior center around, I think, 15, 19,000 square feet. And within a decade, they had to go back to town meeting for another major appropriation to put the huge addition on that they just did because they found out they needed double space. I don't think that this is a building that is too big by any means. My guess is that 25 years from now, the next quarter of a century, whoever's sitting around is going to say, yeah, they built it too small again. But this is a very appropriate building for what we, what the town needs and what the future holds for us. And so I want everyone to understand that this is not a wish list of a handful of seniors. Doug has done these projects all over the country. And, and this is a solidly designed concept for a building that's very feasible, that meets our needs. And so we recommend it. As to the legal complications, some of you know I practice law. There are legal complications wherever you turn around. I agree with John that I, I think these are negotiable down there. And I, ironically, although those of us with experience are not shocked, it'd probably be more difficult working with our own state agencies than it is going to be dealing with the federal. But I think we can do it. The concern on the timing would be, from my perception and the building committee's perception, as, as Chris mentioned, this is, these are conceptual designs. This isn't, this is not a schematic of the building. It's not even begun that process. So we anticipate, assuming that the selectmen choose to do so, that we would have a warrant article on for the spring that would seek an appropriation of money for the design, full design, to the point of construction drawings of a senior council for active living on this site. That we would then, in the following town meeting, be coming in with a, ideally with a bid in hand and saying, this is what the price looks like. And town meeting can then vote on whether the final, the final design and construction and cost are acceptable to the voters.
So that would be following the model that we did for public safety?
Yes, and a model we've used elsewhere as well, same model used in this. So it goes back a long way. It's our traditional way of approaching these projects. If it's going to take a long time to get an answer from the state, we're going to be spending that money presumably on the construction drawings, maybe not 100% sure. So that may impact timing. If, if it doesn't appear, if it appears there are any significant issues and you wouldn't want to get started on the design process and have that money go to waste. So that's one factor that'll may tinker here. But other than that, it's the committee's recommendation that this is an appropriate site. This is a great concept. It seems very feasible in terms of addressing the needs of the seniors. And that two-step process of seeking the approval of town meeting on this location and design in concept, then having drawings drawn up, get a real architectural outline, get a construction bid, and see what the price is for the following spring. At which point, we can start soon after. If we get a favorable vote, we, we can move forward and we may actually have a gorgeous new senior center in time for current seniors to enjoy.
Tom. Okay. So we have one last slide, I promise. Thank you, Tom, for that report from the committee. So I had some, I had a preview into that, into that result. And as a result of hearing what the committee's recommendation was going to be, I started thinking about one of the benefits outside of the center proper. So what you just heard was Chris and his team presenting you a solution for a new Center for Active Living. What I was trying to understand and present to the, to the town, I think, and of course the board, is the larger, maybe sub-regional benefits of a center at Bearcove Park. There's a lot of amenities right in and adjacent to the park that I think would benefit Jennifer and her programming plans for the future center. They include the 400, John, I had 484 acres. I'm not sure where you guys got 467. Either way, it's a really big park, guys. This is a monstrous park. It's got the Back River adjacent to it, runs right down the, the western edge of the park. That actually, in recent years, is where our, the Hingham Rowing Team practices. And so they're crewing in and up and down that river all year. Add to that Lynch Field is right up at that same, on that same wing of the, of the park. You have Carlson Field feet from the proposed Center for Active Living. I think Chris actually showed some proposed pathways directly out to Carlson Field. So to help the, the integration of the senior center programming, Center for Active Living programming, I swore all day I wouldn't do that. The Center for Active Living programming interacting with Carlson Field is, is already being considered. I think that there's opportunities to do that everywhere. And not to, not to, you know, make this too big of a, of a component, but directly across the street is the South Shore Country Club. We're planning to build a pool there. We have a bowling alley up there. We've got an unbelievable restaurant, not to mention a fantastic golf course. All of this is within, within arguably walking distance, certainly short driving distance from the proposed Center for Active Living. So, you know, one of the, Jennifer and I have talked about this now for quite some time and trying to brainstorm and have some fun with what we think the center could be in the future. And one of the, one of the things that I latched onto and, and think would just be so cool is if we could have a, a little mini fleet of golf carts for, for the, for the members at the Center for Active Living to engage in the entirety of that park. There's miles, right? There's miles of roadway in and out of that park.
Who's going to be driving those golf?
These boats. Yeah, it's just, there's so much opportunity down there. Not to mention the, the health concern, the, the health realities. There's miles of hiking trails in and around, in and around that park. Now, there's also coyotes down there, so be careful. There's a lot of opportunity down there that go beyond the traditional Center for Active Living type of programming. And I, and I didn't get a chance because we rolled right from her budget into this discussion, but when we, when we brought Jen on, how many years ago now, Jen?
Almost six.
Six years ago. I knew she was going to breathe energy into this department. And, and she has done that in spades, and she continues to do it. You heard her getting emotional, talking about her dad and her own family and what this center means to her. And, and when she brings that kind of energy like Doug does in his design schemes to the potential for these amenities, it really, it really gives you a vision that I think everybody really enjoys. So I just wanted everyone to understand that there's the center that Chris is proposing and that Tom's committee has recommended unanimously, but there's also a broader, larger programming potential here. So just wanted to highlight that for everyone.
Thank you. So we're going to, we'll have questions later. A number of us have, have points we want to raise as well. But I just want to thank Tom and your committee for the work because your charge was specifically to look at Town Hall and to make an assessment, and you've done that. And then to look at, at another option, and you've done that. And you didn't focus only on one. It was important, and your direction was to do both. And sometimes you wonder why you got to do both, but it was clear that town meeting directed that. And greatly appreciate that you, that you served that function. So, so thank you. And the design team, really exceptional. They were brought in for their experience and they, they did more than their experience would indicate. It was just really, the perspective, the guidance is, is greatly appreciated. So, so thank you. I've got some questions, but I'd like to start first with Liz, then Bill, then myself, and then we'll have other people a chance to participate as well.
Excellent. Thank you. Well, thank you for the presentation. This was quite comprehensive. We have a lot to, to digest. And thank you, Tom, for your leadership and decades of service on this project and your, and the whole committee. I also was hopeful that the Center for Active Living would end up at Town Hall as, that's how we started this process. But I really appreciate the team, your persistence and your patience, trying to find a way and really exhausting that so that I, I am confident in the Bearcove location. I feel like you really did your due diligence and tried to make it work. And it just, it kept feeling like a, a square peg in a round hole. So appreciate the flexibility and the creativity to really look at Bearcove as well. I love the, the design. I think it's important, obviously, to start with the programming, understand really what the needs are, and let the building design flow from that. I know we have had many discussions about the needs of our, our senior citizen population, even just the bathroom and the, what the doorways need to look like. And so it's just, there's so many details to make this a usable space, let alone a space you want to be in and enjoy and really thrive in. And I think that is, that is all of our goal. So I, I'm excited about the vision for Bearcove and the possibility there. I agree, there's a lot of potential with the country club and the fields and the park, obviously. So thrilled about that and to, to see that move forward. Obviously, there's the process that we'll have to go through with the state and, and the federal agencies. But I'm, I'm confident that we have, we've, have enough information that we feel comfortable we can get through that process. So the, the timing is, I think, probably the biggest issue for me. And I, we will do what we can to, to support that and facilitate that as quickly as possible. So I, I guess I don't really have questions right now because I appreciate the design and, and the parking. I guess one thing would be to make sure that that is not too conservative an estimate, the 200 spaces, given how many people we think will come to the center. So, and then just the, the fees. The 34, I guess this is my question, and then I'll turn it over to Bill. In terms of the fees in that 34 million, that doesn't, does that include the design phase as well?
Yes.
Okay. So there'd be a certain amount of money appropriated, Town Meeting '25, for the design that comes out of the 34?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, that's six, the 6.8 there, the, when we had up on our slide, you might be looking at an old presentation, but the, the soft cost number that we have includes all of the design fees, the OPM fees and other kind of soft numbers that are hard to predict at this time.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Oh, great. Both my questions were focused around the approvals needed from the federal government and the state government, and I appreciate the thoroughness with your presentation, John. Thank you. I want to know, I want to thank Doug, Tim, and Chris for your presentation and Tom and your committee's work. That was an excellent presentation, very well done. It was, it was an assessment that I have a lot of confidence in, and I'm absolutely thrilled by the vote of the committee. The fact it was unanimous is fantastic. I've spoken with numerous seniors in town, and they are thrilled with this option and with this course of action. Our goal has been, from the start of this process, to build a center for active living that will make our seniors happy and proud. And that remains our goal throughout this entire process. And I want to note that, you know, two years ago, this board went to town meeting and we asked our community to build a brand-new elementary school. And it was our senior community that stood in support of that request. And then we next asked our community to build a new public safety facility. And our seniors again stood in support of that request. And then months later, we put forth what was one of the largest overrides in the state's history. And it was our seniors who spoke at town meeting in support of that override. And now, our community needs to support our senior population. And I will tell you, I am determined, and I know my colleagues share this determination, to build a center for active living that will be the envy of other communities on the South Shore. And I'm determined to make that happen. I know Joe and Liz share my determination, and I'm thrilled that this process had headed in this direction, and I'm ready to get to work. So thank you.
Hard act. We're all, we're, we're all excited. I want to get into a topic that I'm not sure we've spoken about yet, which is access to the site. Can you put up a map that shows how we will be getting into this? How, how we drive into the, into the Bearcove?
The assumption is that the existing Bearcove Road that goes in, it goes by the building.
Right.
It used to be the credit union that the schools are now using as an office for all their buses and everything. You, you go in there, to your right up the hill would be the You go in there, to your right up the hill would be the DPW. Just pass that to you right before traces, if you go in the back, would be where the light plant is. But essentially, if you continue straight on the road, you go by Carlson Fields area, and you go by the old traces. You continue, and at a point where it gets very narrow, and you're going toward where the park is.
Right.
Assuming that's part of the improvements we're going to end up making.
Right.
So as you are driving toward the gateway to the park itself, and you've got the fire museum on the right.
Yep.
What very few people know is that there's a little alleyway or driveway around that goes up the back of that, and there's a big old storage building back there that the town uses. That's where the site is. So in and out would be...
Yeah, page 26, I think that'll get you.
And just to comment on traffic, traffic, once we kind of get into this design process a little bit further, is always a topic that people feel strongly about, and we want to make sure we're going to be able to answer. So at this stage, when we're looking at sites, we're looking for major red flags. We studied site distances coming out of here.
Yep.
Making sure we have the proper visibility, that we're not going to have to knock down buildings, knock down trees, knock down hillsides. So again, we're looking for red flags. Further along in this process, we're going to be doing traffic counts, looking at using some of our modeling software to show queuing times coming in and out of here, all the kind of lead-in points to get into the park site. So at this stage, like I said, we're looking for the red flags, but further in the design process, and as we have to go to further meetings and explain to the town, we're going to be doing further analytics to make everybody feel good and feel happy about what the resolution will be.
So, I mean, this is an entry point that we've studied before, and where you come out heading towards the train station, you can make a right and head toward Weymouth. You can make a left and get killed. It's real dangerous, and residents have raised concerns with us about that. And is that where folks are going in and out to get to the senior center? That point where there's not a traffic light?
At the moment.
That's the plan right now.
So, I mean, that's something that I know you'll be addressing. I just want to make sure that you're clear that that's a concern, that's a safety concern. It's the residents who live there or who access the park now are really concerned about exiting the park. And not only in safety, it's the wait time. So as long as you're aware that that's an issue.
Yep.
I want to ask another question about the parking, the 200, approximately 200 spots. How, I don't know how to phrase this, how important is that number? The reason I ask is, there may be boards who review this and say, you know, that's way beyond what we're going to allow. It's going to be half of that. And when it's reviewed by the state, and they're talking about all of a sudden having open space paved over, they may say, we're not going to allow that. So how dependent, how important is that number of spots to your plan?
I think it's critical. What we have found over the years in working with senior centers, that seven spaces per thousand square feet, time and time and time again, ends up being a solid number. Truth of the matter is, it could be 250, based on the amount of people we see could be in this building at one time. And I think what's really important, and this is something that we've talked with Jen about a lot, is the goal is to have as many of those spaces occupied throughout the entire day with programming. And that's so different than what you currently have, because you don't have enough spaces to do that. But if there could be an exercise class, you know, every 90 minutes in the exercise room, and there are people in the equipped fitness room, and you've got art going on in all of the art rooms and classrooms, and you've got teaching coming out of the teaching kitchen, 400 people in that building at one time, multiple times a day, isn't an unreasonable number. So that 200, although it's way beyond what zoning says, zoning says one parking space, it says one space per three people, that's 132 people, which is the building one-third occupied. So, you know, it's one of the things that we have just seen time and time again, that when parking is assumed, oh, code and zoning have that covered, it would never work for the facility that Jen wants to operate and that the city, you know, that Hingham deserves. I mean, it's, the amount of how many individual people are using the center today, I can't promise you anything, but we have seen brand-new centers go from a center of this size that you currently have to something considerably larger, and had their membership double in six months, have their membership triple in the first year. And when you look at senior centers and the amount of participants within a community, the fact that you're already at, what was the number someone said, 16% of your population over the age of 50 currently using your center, many communities are between 5 and 7% on a good day. And you're already at 16%, and having a building of this size, and the population, as it looks like it's going to continue to grow, I think the numbers are going to be astronomical. So the reality is, because this park as a whole has the parking down at the field, we've got photographs that we've seen, looking on Google Maps and coming down on degrade level, where when these fields are full with games going on, the people are parked on the grass and parked over the hump and everything else. So I think there's going to be a lot of synergy with putting 200 more parking spaces in this park area as well. But if you came back and said, you know what, we'd really like 250, I wouldn't bat an eye. If you told me you wanted 150, I get as emotional about all of this as Jen does. And I would say, it's not going to work. Which is why, as we were looking at Town Hall, that was one of the biggest problems, is it's just not going to work.
I mean, right here, you're preaching to the choir. I mean, we support that. But just so our eyes are open, the boards that review this may have a different perspective, and we need to make sure that we've got our ducks in a row. What you'll hear is, well, plan the events, so that not everything's happening at the same time you could have people staged, which in many ways defeats the purpose.
Right.
You don't want to say, you can't come here because we've got something else going on. You want to say, come here and be part of the community. But you will meet some resistance on that, not only from a planning perspective, but from environmental concerns, that let's not create more, you know, impervious surface, limit the parking. So this is not a slam dunk, and we need to be prepared to move forward and make this happen.
Well, another point that we didn't even get into with regard to the age friendliness of this design in total, is that parking lot is designed with pedestrians in mind. So when you get out of your car, you go to a sidewalk. No matter where you are on the parking lot, you can get to a sidewalk if you want to walk to the building on a sidewalk and only cross the vehicular traffic lanes once, versus the majority of parking lots that we're all familiar with, you get out of your car and you walk where the cars go. And being that we're talking about an older population, possibly from a mobility standpoint, a challenged population.
You're going to be on golf carts, don't forget that.
Well, we can do that too, right. But we're also talking about loss of hearing, we're also talking about electric vehicles that don't make any noise.
Right.
Well, they do now, they make what my wife refers to as choir of angels. They make that kind of, "Ooh," coming behind you for exactly that reason, to remind you. But I think we could take up less square footage and make this an unfriendly parking lot as well. It wouldn't be as much pavement, but this is also to take into account that we want to make sure that pedestrians are safe on this site.
I don't think 200 is enough, because we didn't take into account how many golf carts.
Right.
Tom, are there other options for getting in and out other than that main road? Because that is, that's a challenge.
I suppose there's a possibility, we haven't looked at it, I haven't talked to Susan about this, she doesn't like when I go off the cuff, but...
You're going off the reservation, I get it.
Perhaps out of the, perhaps getting down into Fort Hill Street without going through that intersection, but that's not really the direction you're worried about.
Right.
But that could take you, you could go out through the, where the National Guard parks now.
Yep.
Go out down there, out to that road, that avoids that intersection, but again, that's not the turn you're worried about.
I think it's taking the left, taking the left.
I don't know how you get up there.
That is tough.
And it gets particularly challenging when the train, train traffic comes in. I mean, someone who uses that field a lot, it's very dangerous to get out, I agree with you.
I mean, technically, there's access out by Lynch now, but that would require making, turning the park into a traveled way, the entirety of Bear Cove Park into a traveled way, which I don't think the National Park Service wants.
Yeah, but I really think we need to consider options, because it's dangerous making that turn out of there.
Oh, yeah.
And with that, I'll open it up to questions or comments, and if you do have a question or comment, please come up to the podium, give us your name and address. We have some people who are watching online, and they won't hear or see you unless you go to the podium, so please, go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Joe Nevins. I live at 46 Lincoln Street, and I am chairman of the Council on Aging, and we would be remiss if we didn't say that we enthusiastically supported this option and have supported it for a while. I would say my biggest challenge right now is that I have a pent-up demand among the members of the Council on Aging who have been working on this for a long time, who are enthusiastically trying to do everything they can to bring this project forward. We want to thank the building committee for all their hard work, thank the consultants for everything that they have done, and also remind the town that this facility and this asset, while focused on people of a certain age, is a community asset. We are an intergenerational town. Many of us have children who live here, some of us grew up here, they're looking for places for their parents, they're looking for themselves in a few years. So right now, we're talking about people who were born in 1974 or earlier. I think we should really be considering also those born in 1984, and those born in 1994 who live in the town. This is going to be an asset that they will be using, and they may be using now for their parents. It is an asset that will lend itself to multiple uses, in addition to just a senior center. So I want to thank you, and we're really enthusiastic and look forward to the next steps.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Joe, I think your math is off. That would make me a senior, and I don't think that's right.
No, we can go.
We can all go. Anyone else online or here? I mean, I think the show of support of people who are here, oh, there's, we do?
There's Mark Duff.
Okay, if you could just give us your name and address, please. Mark?
Mark Duff, 37 Bradley Park Drive. I'm very excited by what I see here, and I think, I personally think the location is My concern is that after having served over 40 years in the fire department, 10 as chief and 20 years as the emergency management director, that it's more of a question than anything else, I presume this building is going to have a backup generator? Does the generator carry the entire load of the building? That includes air conditioning in the entire building during the summer, and heating in the entire building during the winter?
Yes.
Okay. That's extremely important, because I'll tell you a story, and Tom, I think probably remembers this. In 1996, when the current Town Hall was converted from the Central Junior High School to Town Hall, there was a generator in the building that was supposed to carry the entire load of the building. And when the value engineering aspect of the project came along, the generator, the output of the generator was cut significantly, so it only carries the heat. I don't believe it carries the air conditioning. It does not carry power in the current senior center, so if we have that open as a shelter in the winter, and the power in the area goes out, there's no heat. This is extremely important, that that generator serve the building for a cooling center in the summer, and power outages can happen in the summer, and more importantly, a heating center and a shelter in the wintertime for our seniors and for anybody. It's very important that that happened, and I am making a friendly challenge to the board that they make sure that happens, because, for obvious reasons that I've just stated. So I am very excited about this. I think it's a great asset for the park, great for the community. It's a facility, I presume, that can be used for other programs other than the senior center, and let's go for it, but make sure it has that generator, because if it doesn't, you're going to hear from the retired fire chief.
Well, Mark, your challenge is accepted, so...
Thank you.
And we do recognize it, and it's really what we just heard before, is that, well, this is the Center for Active Living, it will be more than that. And so if there's a heat emergency, guess what? It will be used townwide. So we will make sure that it is first-class.
Well, with that, I would wish the board and your entire audience very happy holidays.
And to you, thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you, Chief.
Anyone else?
Didn't try to get it.
I am not seeing anyone else. What I was about to say is that it's not always easy to attend these meetings, and the fact that we have this many people here showing their, not just their concern, but their energy and their willingness to participate in getting to the solution, and that's what we need. So thank you all for being here. Tom, is there anything else you wanted to add?
Thank you.
Okay, we will then, we will move on to the next part of our agenda. We'll pause 30 seconds if anyone wants to head off.
Thank you.
Thank you, Eric.
Thanks, Tom. Good job.
Okay.
So Bill, they literally started when you graduated high school, and it's my way from Princeton to be able to go.
Okay, next item on our agenda is to consider approval of the 2025 retail license renewals. We have an attached list. Tom, is there anything you wanted to add?
Nope, it is all, these renewals are in order.
And for any of these renewals, do we need the sign-off of the police?
No, but he would have provided flags for non-renewal had one been appropriate.
Got it.
And they're not getting any.
Okay. So I am prepared to accept the motion. This is for the retail license renewals.
I will make a motion to approve the renewal of the common victueller all-alcoholic beverages licenses as presented for calendar year 2025.
Second.
Roll call vote. Liz?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I am an aye as well.
I'd make a motion to approve the renewal of the common victueller wine and malt beverages licenses as presented for calendar year 2025.
Second.
Roll call vote. Liz?
Aye.
beverages licenses as presented for calendar year 2025. I will make a motion to approve the renewal of the retail package store all-alcoholic beverages licenses as presented for calendar year 2025. I will make a motion to approve the renewal of the automatic amusement device license as presented for calendar year 2025.
Second.
Roll call, vote. Liz?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I am an aye as well.
I make a motion to approve the renewal of the automatic amusement device license as presented for calendar year 2025. Second.
Roll call, vote. Liz?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I am an aye as well.
I make a motion to approve the renewal of the automatic amusement device license as presented for calendar year 2025.
I was actually going to move that as the next item on our agenda.
Oh.
Consider approval, it's okay, of the 2025 automatic amusement device license renewal. And we just had a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, vote. Liz?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I am an aye as well. I'll now move to the next item, which is to consider approval of the 2025 Class 1 and Class 2 auto dealers license renewals.
I'll make a motion to approve the renewal of the Class 1 and Class 2 auto dealers licenses as presented for calendar year 2025.
Second.
Roll call, vote. Liz?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I am an aye as well. Okay. I think we've handled those. We can move on to appointments. Do we have any appointments for this evening?
I make a motion to appoint Peter Schnorr to the Veterans Council for a term ending June 30th, 2025.
Second.
Roll call, vote. Bill?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
And I am an aye as well. I believe that concludes the appointments for this evening, and now we move to public comment. Is there any member of the public that'd like to comment on items not on the agenda? Seeing none, I will move to Town Administrator Select Board Reports, starting with Art Robert.
Thank you. I just want to mention that last night, we hosted a, a public meeting, or a public listening session regarding the next step in our economic development strategic planning process. We had about 30 people join us either in the room or online to hear a little bit about our, what we're finding in the market study process that's defining realistic options for the community going forward, and we started the process of gathering some feedback in terms of how people in the community feel about different approaches to encouraging the economic development in the square, the shipyard, as well as South Hingham. We started by launching a survey that people who, who joined us last night helped us fill out. I just want to let people know that that survey is online, it's on our economic development webpage, or a link to it is, is there, and I would encourage as many people in the community to take a look and, and chime in and support. That survey will be open until the 16th. We're getting information out to the community and the links, you know, electronically by a number of different means, and we look forward to hearing from you.
So, I'll just add to that. I was one of those folks who participated both in-person and online. I started in-person, had a leave, but then zoomed in. I was impressed by both the number of participants and the questions that were asked, and there's a lot of, of action going on there, and you were really leading the charge, so, so thank you.
And if I, if I could just close by saying, we had really, a really interesting mix of representation. In addition to the select board, the planning board was well represented, as was our HDIC and our sewer commission, so, yes. The word is getting out, and I think we're building a set of great relationships to move forward.
Absolutely. Michelle?
Nothing this evening, thank you.
Mr. Mayo?
Nothing this evening, thank you.
Liz?
Just that the Hingham Affordable Housing Trust is having their last meeting of the year tomorrow, so I look forward to attending that with them.
Great. Bill?
So, I want to congratulate the Hingham Sports Partnership on breaking ground on the DOG project last Friday. We talked a lot about tonight about community assets, that is going to be a wonderful community asset, and my congratulations to the sports partnership, and look forward to that building coming to fruition.
Great. And I've got nothing further this evening. This was an excellent meeting, and I am prepared to take a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Roll call, vote. Liz?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
I am an aye as well. We are adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.
We recognize that taking time to visit, call, or email our town departments to report issues in Hingham doesn't always fit your schedule. Are you looking for an easier way to communicate with the town? Well, now there's an easier way. With the MyHingham mobile app, you can submit service requests or gain information with just a few taps of your phone. To get started, simply download the MyHingham app from the Apple App Store or Google Play, or simply scan our QR code to get the access to the app that's best for your phone. Once you've opened the app, select the Submit a Service Request button. From there, you can choose the type of request you want to submit, whether it's a pothole, a fallen tree, or something else. You'll then be prompted to take a photo of the issue and provide a brief description. You can also use the app to track the status of your issue and receive updates. Using MyHingham puts immediate access to town resources in the palm of your hand, including calendars of meetings and events, agendas for upcoming meetings, building permit filing options, online bill payment options, information about our boards, committees, departments, and services. So, why wait? Download the MyHingham app today and report issues and get information on town government with ease.